Emina Trentai Shetina Lehesler Turin Guam is back from recess. We resume our session today on the consideration of the daily file. We will begin with the third reading and then the voting file. Under the third reading file, we'll begin with Bill Number 153-37 LS. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 153-37 LS, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank Blas Jr., Thomas J. Fisher, Duane T. D. Siniklis, Roy A. B. Canata, Jessie A. Luhon, Sabina Flores Perez, Telot T. Tidegui, Joanne M. Brown, Chris Barnett, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Therese M. Terlaugh, Christopher M. Duñez, William A. Parkinson, Joe S. St. Augustine, Amanda L. Shelton. An act to add a new subsection F to Section 80.37 of Article 2, Chapter 80, Title IX, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the possession of use of an explosive or an improvised explosive device in the commission of a felony.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator St. Augustine. Senator St. Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, aye. Speaker Terlaugh. Speaker Terlaugh, aye.
Bill Number 153-37 LS. Is duly passed by the body. Fifteen ayes and zero nays unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 183-37 COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 183-37 COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Chris Barnett, Jessie A. Luhon, Christopher M. Duñez, Joanne M. Brown, Telot T. Tidegui, Duane T. D. Siniklis, Joe S. St. Augustine, Sabina Flores Perez, Amanda L. Shelton, Roy A. B. Canata, Thomas J. Fisher, William A. Parkinson. An act to amend Sections 25.15B and 25.20B of Chapter 25, Title IX, Guam Code Annotated, relative to enacting higher minimum sentencing requirements for individuals convicted of first and second degree criminal sexual conduct involving victims under 12 years of age.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator St. Augustine. Senator St. Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, aye. Speaker Terlaugh. Speaker Terlaugh, aye.
Bill Number 183-37 COR is passed by fifteen ayes, zero nays. Bill Number 183-37 COR is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 227-37 COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 227-37 COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations. Introduced by Joanne M. Brown, Telot T. Tidegui. An act to amend Section 1909i of Chapter 19, Title I, Guam Code Annotated, relative to enhancing the independent status of the Office of Public Accountability by continuously appropriating one-quarter of 1% of the government of Guam's annual budget to the OPA.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, pass. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, pass. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator St. Augustine. Senator St. Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, aye. Speaker Terlaugh. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Fisher.
Bill Number 227-37 COR received 12 ayes and two nays and is duly passed by this... Thirteen? Bill Number 227-37 COR received 13 ayes and two nays and is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 240-37 COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 240-37 COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. Introduced by Therese M. Terlaugh. An act to amend Section 34111B and add new Sections 34156, 34157, and 34158 of Article 1, Chapter 34, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to effectively distributing and disposing of undistributed child support funds at the Office of the Attorney General of Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, nay. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, pass. Senator St. Augustine. Senator St. Augustine, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, nay. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, aye. Speaker Terlaugh. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Canata. Senator Canata.
Bill Number 240-37 COR received eight ayes and seven nays and is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 109-37 LS, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 109-37 LS, introduced by the Committee on Maritime Transportation, Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens by request of E. Congressional Menhoben Guam, the Guam Youth Congress, in accordance with 2GCA Section 7102. An act to add new subsections 3 and 4 to Section 4124B of Chapter 4, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing parity by creating an exemption from completing the full 75 hours of service learning requirement for graduating high school students in school year 2023, 2024, and instead require the completion of 35 hours of service learning, and to require the completion of 55 hours of service learning for graduating high school students in school year 2024, 2025.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator St. Augustine. Senator St. Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, aye. Speaker Terlaugh.
Bill Number 109-37 LS received 15 ayes and is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 274-37 COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 274-37 COR, as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor, Procurement, and Statistics Research and Planning. Introduced by Sabina Flores Perez, Therese M. Terlaugh, Chris Barnett. An act to add new Sections 14242 and 14243 to Article 2 of Chapter 14, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating a commercial paper program for the Guam Waterworks Authority, approving the terms and conditions of the issuance of Guam Waterworks Authority Revenue Bonds and authorizing Guam Waterworks Authority to obtain loans from time to time through the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act of 2014 WEFIA Program and related matters.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator St. Augustine. Senator St. Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, aye. Speaker Terlaugh. Senator Blas.
Bill Number 274-37 COR received 15 ayes and is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 268-37 COR, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 268-37 COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations and further amended in the Committee of the Hall. Introduced by Telot T. Tidegui, Joanne M. Brown. An act to add new Sections 67111, 67112, and 67113 to Article 1 of Chapter 67, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the services provided by the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator St. Augustine. Senator St. Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tidegui, aye. Speaker Terlaugh.
Bill Number 268-37 COR received 15 ayes and is unanimously passed by this body. Bill Number 277-37 LS, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 277-37 LS, as amended in the Committee of the Hall. Introduced by William A. Parkinson, Amanda L. Shelton, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Thomas J. Fisher, Duane T. D. Siniklis, Roy A. B. Canata, Joe S. St. Augustine, Therese M. Terlaugh, Chris Barnett, Sabina Flores Perez, Jessie A. Luhon. An act to appropriate $31,656,000 from fiscal year 2024 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted levels enumerated in Public Law 37-42, as amended to the Guam Power Authority for a six-month extension to the program in Azuda Peta Itautauta Energy Credit Program, relative to providing customers with $600 credit toward their account.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator St. Augustine. Senator St. Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, aye. Speaker Terlaugh. Senator Blas. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass, nay.
Bill Number 277-37 LS, received 14 ayes and one nay and is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 285-37 LS, clerks, please read the title.
Bill Number 285-37 LS, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriations. Introduced by Joe S. St. Augustine, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Duane T. D. Siniklis, Roy A. B. Canata. An act to appropriate $1 million from fiscal year 2024 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted levels enumerated in Public Law 37-42, as amended to the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs relative to increasing services and operations.
Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator St. Augustine. Senator St. Augustine, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tidegui. Senator Tidegui, aye. Speaker Terlaugh.
Bill Number 285-37 LS received 15 ayes and is duly passed unanimously passed by this body. We're now on the voting file. These will be by show of hands. On the nomination of Michael A. Scro to serve as a member of the Guam Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Michael A. Scro received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Rena K. Borja to serve as a member, general public representative of the Guam Contractors License Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Rena K. Borja received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. That concludes our voting file. We're now on brief extension of remarks. The floor is open. If there are none, Majority Leader, Senator Fisher, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, ma'am, and good afternoon to my colleagues here. Today, 30 May, or 31 May, 2024, here on Guam, 30 May, 2024, in New York, New York, a jury of 12 random individuals, selected randomly with the consent of both the defense and the prosecution, convicted Donald J. Trump. He is now an adjudicated and convicted felon, 34 counts. The reason I bring this up is I can't think of a day, Madam Speaker, when I have been prouder to be an American. Our institutions have held the man who once occupied the most powerful position on earth has been pronounced guilty by his peers. These were not kings, these were not presidents, these were not potentates, they were average individuals. The rule of law has prevailed. It is a moment of deep, deep national pride, and I say that even if the verdict had been otherwise. The institution against attack has prevailed. And I... The institution against attack has prevailed, and I would just congratulate all Americans everywhere. We are building a more perfect union, and as I, I'll just say, I have never, never been prouder to be an American. Thank you, ma'am.
Sutus Massey, Senator Fisher. On brief extension of remarks, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, I wanted to speak about a bill that we passed today with regards to the credit that we are providing to our residents for the next six months. And I just want our colleagues to be mindful, you know, I, I have no objection, and as I mentioned when this bill was being discussed and debated on the floor, but I had no objection to supporting our people and providing this, but colleagues, I just wanted to be, to relay, I think we just need to think a little more with regards to the legislation that we pass because we didn't do a lot of heavy lifting with this bill. You know, the very middle class that really supports our economy. You know, I'm sure they ask themselves, because I, you know, many of us, all of us here, maybe some have a few million here or there, but most of us, myself included, are part of that working middle class. I'm on my thirty-sixth year of working in my life. And it's the working middle class on Guam really that doesn't get a break. Because they're told, well, you earn a little too much, you know, you're not eligible for this program, and certainly during the pandemic, many of our working middle class, that's the one thing you heard. They weren't eligible for a awful lot of programs. If you make a lot, you get tax credits. If you make little to nothing, you get subsidized. You're able to take advantage of a lot of the social programs that are provided to assist those that are, for whatever reason, are unable to work or provide for themselves or their family. And sure, you know, this hundred-dollar credit, it's going to offset some of the needs of our people, maybe they get another, you know, week of gas for their car. Maybe they're able to pay a credit card bill. Maybe they're able to take care of other things that they otherwise would not be able to, because it's just that, that little, you know, thin line that allows them to get by from one paycheck to the next. And you know, that's the irony of it all, it's the really hard-working middle class out there that suffers the most, when you think about it. Moving forward, colleagues, and I mentioned this also when we debated this bill, that we always have to be financially conscious, we should always be financially conscious. This is nothing we can high-five each other on. That we're giving the people of Guam, you know, an extra hundred dollars a month for the next six months, because really, that's the least we can do. They're the ones that are paying for this government. And it's important that as we make decisions, we address the sustainability of our decisions. Because colleagues, things do come up that you don't expect. And I've never, I'll tell you, this is round eight for me. Over a thirty-year span, in between with an absence of fourteen years, I have never seen the amount of spending without reservation of members of Guam Legislature my entire years of service. And that comes from a time, I guess, because I was here at a time when we did not have all this money flowing. And you know, the more I think about this, and I do think about these things, most of our people, at least as I run and talk to them, especially in the last few months, they don't feel that their lives are better. Isn't that interesting? All this money flowing through our island and our people, majority of them, don't feel that their lives are better in the areas that matter to them the most. And maybe it's in those areas we need to do a little more heavy lifting. You know, it's easy to do all this and say, oh, we got the money, it's flowing, we can pay this and pay that, and ain't we just grand, because we're in office at a time when this is happening. But can we sustain it? I worry because, yes, you know, I did vote for the bill that, uh, you know, is going to allow the Guam Waterworks Authority to address their bond financing. And that pains me too. It's a double-edged sword. Because I used to be the chair of the committee that oversaw the Guam Waterworks Authority, and I was the one who championed their first hundred-million-dollar bond twenty years ago. And I'm a little pain to see that here we are at this juncture, twenty years later, and we're looking at seventy-one percent-plus rate increases to our people. Power, we can, I mean, we can survive without the power. Heck, I learned to cook rice this last typhoon without a rice cooker. Took me this long to figure that out, my mom just told me how to do it, and I was pleasantly surprised. But water. When the rate shocks sinks into our people, they're going to get the increase in their power rates, and they're going to get almost a triple increase in their water rates. And that's going to make it even difficult for the working middle class here on Guam to continue to survive, as our good colleague Senator Telo mentioned the other day. Those are the ones that are leaving with what money and resources they have to get on a plane. And think about that, I think about it, people that I know in my immediate circle that have had private businesses on Guam, that have packed those businesses up and left. Educators that I know in my family that have packed up and left, who've had so many years invested here, still had years to retire and left Guam. I think we need to ask ourselves, why is that? In this time of plenty that we have those, including the administration, that brags? Even though I can't understand the cut and peak of financing from one week to the other, a week and a half later, we didn't know we're going to get thirteen million dollars in excess revenue. Which is, you know, enlightening to me, having been in a couple administrations, I know the finance people almost on a daily basis monitor the revenues coming into the government of Guam, because there were days that that account was almost down to just a few thousand dollars to make payroll. So colleagues, think about that moving forward when we're all gangbusters to, oh, spend all the money, the people's money. Because there are going to be needs, there are needs already. And for those of you colleagues that don't attend a lot of public hearings, when the people come in, because they even ask us when we're sitting there, where's the rest of your colleagues? I'm not making it up, watch, watch the hearings if you ever get around to it. How about session when we don't show up? And some of us are notorious for not showing up to session, which is the most important thing we do, unless you really have a good reason, and yes, there are times, good reasons, very valid reasons why we can't be here, but for the most part, I think the people of Guam, when they elected us, expect us to be here, to deliberate. When we don't show up to most hearings and we don't show up to session, how are we going to tell the people we're working for them to represent their concerns and their interests? When we're really not here? You know, the people of Guam are going to make their own decisions, as they ultimately do, and you know, I've let go a long time ago, I thought, yeah, that's in the hands of the people, they get to decide. We get to offer ourselves that we're going to run, and we can say, yes, we're there to represent you, my dear people of Guam. But it's in the doing that matters, it's doing the hard work, it's, it's being a leader when the times are challenging, and they're not easy. But we really need to think about that, colleagues, because with all that has showered us with these federal monies, the military buildup, the quality for most of our people's lives on Guam, in my assessment and the feedback that I get and what I see, is not better. It's not better in our education system, it's not better in our healthcare system. The list goes on. So keep that in mind, colleagues, as you move forward in your time, because this is all temporary, you know, we're caretakers for a time. Some of us have very brief, very brief time. So as we move forward, I hope we're more conscientious about this and our responsibilities, because it is a privilege to be here. To sit here. Maybe sometimes we don't realize that till we're not here anymore. So I hope colleagues, please, think about that, because I do think about these things, they do weigh me down. It's not just to sit here and say, oh, know about this and know about that, and I'll be the negative, it's just ensuring that we're doing responsible legislation, that we're properly managing the people's money. And that we're addressing the needs that they have, because we don't have endless resources, we know the needs are great out there, and the resources are limited, and how do we make the best decision? Hopefully that we're always making the right decision with regards to their interests and their needs out there. But I am troubled by that, I'm troubled by the fact that even with all this money, the quality of our people's lives are less. And maybe those are things, that's the, that's the heavy lifting, right? As I mentioned yesterday or the other day, right? Ay, gof makat estin apit. Oh my goodness, how can I, how can I lift this up? It's so heavy. So with that, Madam Speaker, I, I just wanted to add those thoughts to our colleagues here. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Sutus Massey, Senator Brown. On brief extension of remarks, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Senator Titegui, you're recognized.
Sutus Massey, Madam Speaker. First, I'd like to thank my colleagues for supporting both veterans' bills that were passed unanimously by this body. Now our veterans are well aware, even before we passed it, of the additional services they will receive. Our veterans deserve nothing more than the best that we can offer them for their services. So I thank this body for recognizing that. But today is not a day to start clapping for people when they're at their lowest point after they served the United States in the best capacity. It was shameful to hear people clapping because somebody was convicted, a man who, hey, I didn't vote for Trump because I can't vote here on Guam. But to take a man down who has done nothing but to support this island when he was a president, when he went to bat for us, when North Korea was threatening our island, a president who made sure he stopped by this island every time he was in Asia to meet with our governor. I'll tell you what else he did. Medicaid reimbursement rates made identical to what fifty states were getting. That's what he did. Federal reimbursement rates went down from fifty-five percent to eighty-eight percent. That's what he did. Hospital was allowed to rebase Medicaid reimbursement rate. Hospital received higher reimbursement for services. When a sitting Democrat said it could never happen, well, it did because of this president. From Obama kicking out H-two workers, Trump's administration loosened those requirements. And you know how much that helps to lower the cost of our housing? And you sit and clap for something like this? Well, he can appeal. He can appeal. But don't forget all the things that he's done for Guam as a president. All those things I mentioned. But the concentration now needs to move forward on this island, not because somebody's god who lost, what's her name, Clinton? Hillary or something, lost to him, and he's still upset? I mean, we need to stop this advertising of of outside politics and concentrate on what's happening on this island. We have so many issues. Nobody has brought up one of the biggest issues that we're going to be facing, it's been one year since Marwah, the typhoon, one year. Watch your insurance. Your house insurance, your car insurance, almost double. That is coming down the line. You talked about things being raised on this island, inflation, insurance. If you're lucky to still get it, if you made a claim, it's going to be so difficult. And many of those families who have to, who have to go get a loan, there are required insurance. The insurance alone is probably going to cost more than the mortgage. We have real issues on this island that we need to address. Real issues. And we also have to remember those who helped this island. Let's not forget that. Shame on those who clapped. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sutus Massey, Senator Titegui. Senator Parkinson.
Well, on a lighter note, I just wanted to share with all the people of Guam that I have happily fallen from our noble rank of bachelors forever. I am now a father of a beautiful baby girl. Her name is her name is Camilla Mari. She was six pounds, fifteen ounces, she's going to be a tall, beautiful young lady someday. And so really, this closing remark is for her. She is just a little bit older than a week old, and, uh, someday, if you're ever watching this, I want you to know, Camilla Mari, that I hope you're woefully embarrassed when you're watching it, and that daddy loves you very much and always will. With that, Madam Chair, I yield the rest of my time.
Sutus Massey, Senator Parkinson. Senator Siniklis.
I don't know how you top that, Madam Speaker. Congratulations there, brother, and, uh, thank you, Madam Speaker, for the time, the opportunity. I clap for Tom because I really like him. I, I, I love Senator Tom, so, uh, uh, I clap for you. When I was about eight years old, I think I took interest in the population of the island. I think it was about hundred-and-twenty-some thousand. And I realized that when people, you know, when the economy gets bad, they move away. It's, it's a cyclical thing, it's a cyclical thing. And I don't want to bore everybody with, uh, economics, because I'm not an economics professor, but thank goodness. But, uh, I think it was my, one of my professors or somebody in high school that told me that inflation is just a phenomenon, it just happens. And over time, things just get expensive, and they just keep getting more expensive, over time, over time. That's why when, back in the nineteen fifties, you could probably walk into a store and get a twenty-five-cent hot dog. And you can't do that today, uh, hot dogs are almost four dollars now. I remember when my dad was telling me he had fif- he made fifty cents at the Port, Port Authority of Guam a long time ago. Now you, they're, they're, you know, the, the salaries have increased, so over time, things just get expensive, over time. And a lot of, uh, the, the processes and, and the stuff, the, the policies that are made, that really affect inflation is in, 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 you know, in Washington, D.C. So I've been mauling this over and like, how do we help the people here with the rate of inflation? So when I talk to some of my employees, how do you, how do you, uh, beat inflation? Well, I tell them to work overtime and make more money than the rate of inflation. But, you know, you're trading your time with, away from your family. And, um, I would say, you know, you've just got to work harder and make more money. And that's how you beat inflation, uh, personally, on a personal note. But how do you help people as a, as a policymaker here on this island? How do you do that? Well, if you have a surplus, you have extra funds, well, then you kind of like give it back to them so that they can use it, uh, or, or alleviate the cost of rising commodities or power or whatever. And in this case, I felt, and I'm thankful for my colleagues for their support also, and Senator Parkinson, for acknowledging that there, there is, uh, there is a way where we can actually alleviate some of the, the rising rate, the, the rates of inflation. But my sister doesn't know this, but I, I try to, um, you know, because she's one of those people that moved away. And, uh, it's always been my thing, if I could ever help to have our people not move away, I, I'd do it, you know? Uh, I don't like losing our people and having them move to the states, but you know, I've noticed that over time, it's a cyclical thing. People, you know, there's, there's only so much our island People, you know, there's, there's only so much our island can support. There's only so much workers our island can support and then some people, they, they move away for a better opportunity. Perhaps in the military or moving away to work as a teacher. But that's the beauty of our country. And I like that he pointed out, you know, it's a wonderful time to be an American because you don't have to be a Guamanian and American here on Guam. You can be an American and a Guamanian in Florida. And that's the beauty of it. So you know, if you, and, and there are other states out there that don't have the type of rapid rate of inflation we have on this island. But that's, that's the beauty of living in America. I don't know any other country in the world where people are risking life and limb to cross a border, you know? So that's, that's the beauty of the country which we live in. And I applaud, I thank Senator Fisher for pointing that out again to us. But I wanted to end on a much lighter note and I want to thank, I want to thank our colleagues for recognizing that we, what we did today is alleviate some of the burdens of our people. And thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Sidoos Massey, Senators Siniklas. Vice Speaker Tina Monia Barnes.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Speaker. I usually don't speak on extension of remarks, but I felt compelled to talk this afternoon. And after hearing the good Senator from Midey talk about how a proud father he is to have, I think her name is Carmela Mari, right? Be born and that, that's really positive news, that's, that's great news. And you know, Madam Speaker, I wanted to bring up a word that one of our former governors used a lot, several of our governors, and that word is inatfamalik, right? It's to be good, to come together, to make good. And I just wanted to say that in this august body, right? We may not always agree, but we really should, if we don't agree, let us agree to disagree. If we don't like what a colleague is saying, we should still respect the comments. We should work with collegiality. I always said, Madam Speaker, that, you know, sometimes I feel there really shouldn't be a party because we should be working together, literally working together as colleagues and, and making sure we get what's best for our community. Literally, we should be working and seeing where, what we should get from Uncle Sam, what new industries are out there that we can work with, how can we create new jobs? But let's do it together. I'm reminded about an event that I was at about a couple of weeks ago when our former governor, who's now the president of Guam Visitors Bureau Governor Geteris, and kudos to him because he talked about un merianas, bringing CNMI to Guam together, together as one, and looking at our similarities of issues of concern and work on it together to make our islands better. And Madam Speakers, we have the Guam Micronesian Island Fair starting tomorrow, I guess, another major project from the Guam Visitors Bureau and a lot in the community. It's about celebrating Guam and Micronesia. It's called the Guam Micronesian Island Fair. It's about all our islands, our Micronesian islands coming together and uniting, especially within this region. I always advocate, you know, we should get not just for us, but also our brothers and sisters in our blue continent because together, together we become the biggest mass of, of, of landmass, but we become stronger and united to work for what's good, not just for ourselves, but for our people. I, I, I guess on behalf of GBB, that Guam Micronesian Island Fair starts tomorrow at 4:00 PM and, and I just wanted to make sure that the people of Guam knew that also. So it's a two-day event. And again, it brings all the islands, our island brothers and sisters together in selling and, and music and dance and song and food and just a lot of crafts. Bringing the X, the, what's great in each of our island brothers and sisters to see how we can blend, mesh, buy from each other and just have a great weekend. So that comes up this weekend and I just want to say that un dunkle in a sidoos massey for, to the people of Guam for giving us an opportunity to serve them and truly bring out the inatfamalik spirit for all that is good for our island, our brothers and sisters in the NMI, but more importantly, our brothers and sisters in, in Micronesia and the blue continent. Sidoos Mbini DC, Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my thoughts in this extension of remarks. Sinamasi.
Sinamasi, Vice Speaker. Senator Luhania, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you and good evening, or good afternoon, colleagues. I just want to again congratulate all the graduates this year. Big congratulations to all the graduates of Guam and everywhere and all the students that were promoted as, as well. And to the students that will be going off-island, hey, go see the world, conquer, and please seriously consider coming back home as well and serving the people of Guam. And also, I just want to kudos to my, my baby girl that graduated last, last week. And so, and graduated class salutatorian. So I was proud of daddy and I told Senator Parkinson here, I said, it only gets better, you have a baby girl, it only gets better and it only gets more expensive. And then at a certain age, you say, you know, can we stunt their growth and no more age growth? Okay, because let's say I'm getting older and all the, the boys will be coming around, right? So anyway, but again, congratulations to all the graduates at Guam and wherever you're at and promotions. And again, thank you, colleagues. It was, again, this is, the hall were people's lives. We determine people's lives here. These were, again, hallowed halls. And as we look in the church, I know there's a baccalaureate mass going on. I think it looks like they're, they're baccalaureate mass for Southern High, right? I think it's Southern High, yeah. And as, you know, God's laws are there, this is where man's laws are created over here. So it's as hallowed hall as, as the church across the street here. So again, we debate it and of course, today, I'm acting in the voting of the bills and we come to an understanding. So with that, again, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. My colleagues have a great and safe weekend. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Luhana. A brief extension of remarks. Senator Caneta, are you raising your hand? Okay, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, today we culminated session of different types of bills. And I want to actually, you know, compliment and supplement the remarks that were provided by the gentlelady from Pago Bay, Senator Brown, my colleague. And basically explain my vote on a bill that I guess I was the only one that voted in opposition of. The intent and the reason and what it's for. Even I can't say it wasn't, it's a good. But for things that are, I'm just going to end it with this. My vote can be summed up in two words. Actually, three. Colleagues, brace yourself. Thank you very much.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Blas. On brief extension of remarks, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized? If not, majority leader, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Congratulations to all the graduates, especially to our colleague Senator Luhana and to our colleague Senator Parkinson on the new baby. We invite everyone again to the Micronesian Island Fair this weekend at Ipau Beach and we wish everyone a blessed weekend. And with that, Madam Speaker, I move to adjourn today's session subject to the call of the speaker.
On that motion to adjourn subject to the call of the speaker, is there any objection?
No objection.
Seeing none, we are adjourned subject to the call of the speaker. Sidoos Massey, colleagues and staff.